I thought that's what we decided on, right? Was it, we were gonna go with that?
Give us the intro one more time now that we're recording.
Is it 2019?
2019, April 22nd. Very good, so now we're recording, so it's 5:04, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education for April 22nd, 2019. And as we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. McGrath has a little video of some students here that are going to lead us in the pledge this evening. All right, well, I appreciate that, Doc. I didn't get much audio here on my part, but I'm glad to have the visual there. And that was a nice touch, a nice way for them to start the morning. And as we typically start these meetings, we'll start off with a quick thank you here to everyone across the district, all of our staff and students and parents who are working so hard to try and make this a manageable situation as they work through this distance education process. So we thank you for that. Again, we will dispense tonight with the typical introductions, which we would have at an in-person meeting. It's just a little too difficult here with all the folks we have joining us remotely. So we'll move right to our consent agenda. I would ask our Board of Education members, of course, if you have your phones on mute or the computers on mute, please open up your microphones so that we can vote on the consent agenda. For those of you at home, you can find this on the BHBL website under Board of Education. And the meeting minutes are there, as well as the agendas. Tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes of the March 24th regular meeting, March 31st and April 15th special meetings. We have personnel items to vote on this evening, as well as the financials. Consideration of approval of the amended 403B plan. The approval of disposal of obsolete or surplus equipment. Approval of a Questar III contract for 2020-2021. Approval of a contract for help and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending schools out of district. And the approval of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. But can we get a motion, please?
So moved, it's Peter.
All right. All right, Dottie, that's a motion by Peter and second by Jen Longton. First, Chris or Dave, anything that you gentlemen would like to add, point out or note here on anything on the consent agenda?
Yes, Patrick, thank you. Hi, everybody. Tonight is a great night, obviously, as Patrick mentioned. We continue with our absence of normalcy through remote learning, but continue on that are fantastic, that we need to celebrate. And one of those things is that six of our teachers are being put forth tonight for the board to consider for tenure for this spring and next year. I just want to take a minute to recognize those individuals. I think one or two are actually on the call tonight, which is, which is great. But we do have six individuals, Cody Kibler, Middle School Mathematics; Cathy Perry, High School Computer Science; Kate Jones, High School Family Consumer Science; Aaron Laverdu, High School Special Education; Darcy Powell, Passionate Speech Therapist; and Colleen Froshower, Middle School Physical Education. And in addition to being six exceptional teachers and related service providers, also the individuals that you're considering tonight, just collectively. I took a few notes of things. So in addition to their teaching, they also serve as team leaders, committee members, advisors to classes, yearbook advisor, coding club advisor, develop interdisciplinary courses at the high school, participate actively in PTA events, have connected kids to college programming and service learning through Habitat for Humanity, coach multiple sports, have been involved with connecting kids at the high school to a credit recovery digital platform that allows them to stay connected to high school and continue on with their diploma requirements and several, several other things. So it's just with my fullest pride that I bring them before you to consider tonight each of these six individuals for tenure. They do a ton in the classroom. I know they're doing amazing things in a remote classroom right now and just the group of exceptional, exceptional individuals. So I'm really happy to bring them before the group tonight and recommend them myself and allow you to recommend them for tenure. So thank you, Patrick, for that opportunity.
Thank you, Dave. And actually, as we're on the personnel agenda item here, I would also point out that we have a resignation apparently from Mrs. Denofrio. And I just wanted to wish her the best with whatever is next for her. She was a phenomenal teacher. I forget which one of my children she had now, if not two of them, but just a fantastic teacher and a wonderful person. So I know that she'll be missed and I wish her the very best of luck.
And if, Patrick, I'm sorry, you got, I wasn't fast enough. I just, I too wanted to just, I, when I came on board in my previous position as the K-12 for Science and Tech, Allison was the lead, one of the lead science teachers at Charleston Heights along with Bonnie O'Rourke. And just an amazing person as we were trying to roll out the new science standards these past couple of years, just an exceptional person, a driving force in science education and really, really all things, you know, related to early childhood education, but an amazing advocate for science. So I want to echo, echo your sentiments as well. And, you know, she took a leave of absence as she moved from our area and is doing well. But we certainly, certainly miss her and wish her well as well.
No doubt, thanks, Dave. Yeah, she was, she was wonderful. So I saw that she's not dialed in tonight. When you mentioned a few people were logged on, I looked to see if she was here. So I could wish her well personally, but yeah, she was, she was wonderful and we'll miss her. All right, so thanks, thanks very much, Dave. Anything else from you gentlemen? Chris, anything from you on financials or any of the items on the consent agenda?
Not, nothing tonight unless there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good, questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to check, okay. Yeah, Chris, I just want to ask you, you know, I'm looking at the extra class financials and I'm wondering, you know, what's kind of, you know, where we're going to go with that? You know, I'm hoping we can, you know, I know a lot of the clubs have a budget for different events that we're not going to have. I also know that Mr. Brunson and I think some of the other leaders in our schools are putting together kind of online activities for our students. I know at the SUNY level, they're actually having gaming contests and prizes for students that participate. So I just don't know in terms of that money, you know, it might be nice to think about how we can use it and get it back to the students in one way or another.
No, I think it's a great idea and I think there's a lot of different initiatives. I know you brought up, and I believe Tim Brunson is looking into. I think it'd be great to see if we could use that to make our students here as memorable as possible, given the uncertainties we face with how we're going to end the year. But I'll certainly bring that up with him, we'd obviously want his input. And I don't know, Hannah, are you there from the SGO perspective? Some ideas there, hopefully you can talk to Mr. Brunson as well or add anything to that question you'd like to see how we could use some of the monies that students have fundraised or earned throughout the year to do some activities that would be appropriate in this environment? Anything on that end, Hannah, or no?
Hi, so yeah, so Mr. Brunson has invited several seniors to, we actually have the Google Meet tomorrow night to discuss senior events. So I can certainly bring that up to him and he'll be giving us any ideas that he has. Additionally, I know as far as SGO goes, we're working to plan a couple of things for the end of the year. Because we are only able to plan virtual events right now, it's not a lot of ways to spend funding. So we're trying to see, see what we can do to put some virtual events on. And I think as far as the excess funding goes, that's never a bad thing for our clubs to have excess funding because that means that next year we can put on bigger and better events, even though I won't be here. But yeah, so that's kind of the plan right now and I'll definitely update you all as that progresses. But I think as we get later into this spring, there will be some events planned.
Very good. Thanks, Peter. Any follow-up to that, sir, before we move on? No, it looks like you're back on mute, very good. Okay, any other questions from the board? And if not, we'll ask you all to come off for you, please, for the vote. Okay, everyone in favor? Any opposed? Abstained, motion carries. Okay, we have two action items tonight, thank you all. The first is consideration of approval of the BOSI's Administrative Budget Vote Resolution. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
This is Peter's second.
All right, so this one is just the reverse there, Dottie. Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Peter. Any questions on this? I appreciate Tara sending this back out to everyone for our review. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And the second action item tonight, consideration of approval of a vote to elect the BOSI's board members. That's a little awkward, isn't it? We have four positions open. I think we've received some information, a resume and a request for support from the candidate in the Shen School District. I don't know if there are any questions or concerns on the part of any of the board members, but for anyone that reviewed the, you know, I apologize. But let me get a, let me get a motion on that first before I say anything else.
So moved.
All right, that's Don and Jen, Dottie. If for anyone that saw the document that was attached, again, thank you to Tara for drawing our attention to it earlier today. There are four positions open and only four people running. And we actually appreciate the work that they put in. And I know how much time it takes just on a local Board of Education. I can't imagine being on a BOSI's Board of Education as well. So I appreciate the work they're doing. I certainly don't have any concerns, but let me open it up to the board for any questions, concerns that they might have. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries. All right, Dr. McGrath, I'm not even sure how we're doing this, if we have people writing to Tara or in a text box here, but I don't know if we have anyone that is looking for privilege of the floor tonight. I don't see any comments here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there are, I don't, I don't think that we were going to work with privilege of the floor through this format.
Yeah, we put it on, I wasn't sure we were either, but we did put it on the agenda. So I just wanted to be sure if it was there for a reason or you had anyone that had reached out to the administration in advance. But I see nothing in the comment section, so that works for me, Doc. We can, we can move on to discussion items then. And I guess we're going to shut off the cameras here or are we going to keep them on?
We're going to keep it rolling the whole time, yeah.
Very good.
Patrick, if I can just add too, with respect to comments or privilege, if there's people here who want to talk about the budget, what we are going to be planning to put forward a budget forum in the next week or so, I will announce it on the webpage and it'll be an interactive opportunity for people to bring forth comments and listen to a budget, a typical budget presentation and then bring about comments and things. So we have plenty of time as we finish up the development of this budget to continue to have discussions there. So we'll have that set up very shortly.
Yeah, very good. And I apologize to everyone as well that Dr. McGrath and I are usually much more in sync for these meetings, but we're not able to have our typical group agenda meetings with the entire team. So we're all trying to work through the process here, keep everyone updated, up to speed and handle all the important business of the district and keep these meetings running to allow full transparency for what the board is up to and what the Board of Education is approving. So thank you for that, Doc. All right, so keeping the cameras rolling, then we'll move right to discussion items. And we'll start with any questions or comments about the last Finance Committee meeting. I'll just let everyone know what I shared with Dr. McGrath earlier because I had to jump off of our last Finance Committee call a little bit early. But I want to thank the administrative team for what they've put together. You know, when you go through economic uncertainty like this and we're facing the challenges that we are and we hear every day, I know Peter does, being in the higher education space, the revenue shortfall psychologists in universities are facing and obviously we know what's happening at the state level and the impact that that will have on our school district. There are two things we really want to do. The first, of course, is keep open all the same academic opportunities for our students that they've had over the years and that we've all come to expect from this fantastic district. But the second thing you want to try and do is not have to let go of any staff during a time like this. And I think the budget that was put forward does a great job of both preserving academic programs as well as moving people around in some different places to keep people actively engaged and employed in our district. And those would have been my two goals going in. And I think the administration did a fantastic job of preventing a budget, presenting a budget that accomplished both of those items. So I want to thank the administrative team for all their work and for the last presentation. And let me turn it over to Dr. McGrath first to talk about anything else related to the budget forum or to Chris, of course, anything else on the budget, any updates that he might share? And then we'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Yeah, I'll defer to Chris in just a second, just to mention that, that we, as I said, we do plan to have a couple of budget forums for staff and for the public. So we'll be getting that stuff out on the, on the web, information about time and the link for that soon. That'll be obviously a remote meeting like this and we'll have that presentation. And also that we have the, we have the video of the Finance Committee meeting, which was an open meeting, public meeting, and that will also be on the website. People want to watch that original presentation that you just referred to.
The only item I wanted to follow up with is we wanted to make sure the board had the opportunity to digest the contents of the Finance Committee meeting last week. You know, coming around here now, if the board is comfortable with everything we presented, and thank you for the kind words, Patrick, Patrick Ziegler, we appreciate it. The next step will be, we're going to start to put together some of the formal documents related to the budget. Keep an eye on the electronic budget binder, we'll be updating that budget binder with the more formal documents. We'll also be putting together the budget forum and we'll move forward as we can. As a reminder, we're going to continue to move forward as we traditionally do, but we still do not know if and when there will be a budget vote date or any other board elections, anything along those lines. We're still waiting for guidance from the state. So right now, we believe we'd like to have a forum next week on the budget, as Patrick McGrath talked about. Subsequent to that, we'll probably get you all the budget documents for a Board of Education vote to adopt the budget. We're thinking sometime in May. And then if there is a vote sometime in June, a public vote, we'll be ready for that as well. Again, it's a little bit of an error of uncertainty. We're going to try to keep our processes and procedures the same as we have in the past, but it's a little difficult without knowing exactly what the next steps are going to be as far as a vote is concerned. But next step is the forum. And after that, hopefully we'll have the budget for adoption by the Board of Education sometime in May with what we believe will be a budget vote by the public sometime to follow in June. That's the best we have right now. So that's where we go from here.
Thanks, Chris. And just to make sure my memory serves me well here. If I recall from a prior Finance Committee meeting, it may have been, may have been the last in-person meeting we had before we all went on lockdown here. I think you mentioned that there was some discussion or the possibility of not having a vote from, by the public, but it would simply be up to the Boards of Education to vote on the budget. Is that accurate? Do I remember that correctly? Do we have any more guidance on that? Or was this just something that was discussed or bantered about, but may or may not even be permissible by law?
We don't have any further guidance on that. That is something that was being advocated for by several different organizations that are deeply involved in public education in New York State. In times like this, their assertion was that school districts might want to have the ability to approve their budgets the same way towns and counties and other municipalities do, that way avoiding the gathering of people coming to vote. There are other ways to do it, which would possibly be a mass absentee ballot situation where that was done. There's been a few things, to your point, there's been a few things bantered about by different constituency groups. The one thing that's missing right now is any definitive information from the state. So there's a lot of different ideas out there. And I think there's a lot of ways, for lack of a better word, to get the temporary on this process. It's just whichever one the state decides they want us to pursue, we'll be ready to pursue and we'll get it done. But it's just right now waiting to see what that's going to be.
Very good, all right.
Chris, this is Don Marshall. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, sir.
Hey, I know there's a lot of uncertainty, but one of the things that's come up and I was in the governor's, some of the governor's proposals and stuff, the possibility of a midterm cut in funding in the middle of the year. And again, it's unknown, but the trends right now in terms of expenses and income seem to be pretty, pretty dire. And I'm just wondering if there is any provisions in this draft for, you know, mid-year adjustments should those, should those cuts occur?
One of the things we always attempt to do with every budget that goes on on a yearly basis, to have some provision for risk so that we're able to adjust to unknown circumstances as they occur. Now, this could be a greater unknown than we faced, at least in my eight, nine years here at Burn Hills Boston Lake. This is a pretty significant unknown. The other things that we're hearing right now is apparently the federal government is supposed to be meeting soon, I guess on what they're calling the COVID-4 response, where they may be dedicating some funding to localities or state governments that may help abrogate that need for mid-year aid cuts on the state front. So we're hearing dire news from the state. Part of that dire news from the state may be in an effort to elicit help from the federal government. The federal government may step in and assist with any of those revenue shortfalls the state may face. Again, a lot of that is largely out of our control, but we do have provision for risk in the budget. And we also may have to make some mid-year decisions depending on how bad, how bad the news we get is. But we are prepared to meet, to work together with all our constituents to figure out a best path forward if we get some unexpected news, unfortunate, unexpected news throughout the middle of the year. Okay, thanks.
Great, that's a good question, Don, thank you.
Chris, could you just address the timeline on that? When we're expecting to potentially get the benchmarks where the governor's office would do these look backs and try to, and let us know? Because it could have, it could seriously still impact our budget as it stands right now.
Well, the first look back period, Patrick, is going to be right after April 30th of this year. And one of the things they've been unclear about is that if the state's revenues don't meet their projections, if there's a cut to aid to school districts, would that cut in aid be applicable to the 2019-2020 school year or the 2020-2021 school year? That's yet to be determined. But one of the reasons why we're comfortable holding off on budget adoption by the Board of Education until mid-May is hopefully that gets us past at least that first look back period where if there is a significant change in revenue next year to the school district, we'll at least have that information and we have the ability to adjust or do something different before we recommend, before the superintendent puts the budget before the Board of Education for adoption. So that's the first look back period. After that, my understanding is that it's quarterly. Every quarter, the state is going to look at its revenue situation and see, or expenses as well, and see if there's any deviation, they'd use that greater than 1% number from what they proposed. And if that deviation is greater than 1%, they would then take that opportunity to readjust their expenses, which again, their expenses are revenues to us in order to adjust for their shortfall. So it's going to occur throughout the course of the year. It's not going to be one time, it's going to be several times where we're going to be facing this over the course of next year, according to the current governor's and legislative proposal.
Thanks, Chris.
I didn't either quit. Yeah, sorry, Peter. Just Peter, I just want to make a comment too, is as we're thinking about this into the next fiscal year, you know, I'm, I'm kind of wondering where we'll be, right, in the fall? We really don't know what's going on, what it's going to look like. I know that's something we're struggling on it, you know, in higher education. And so I'm wondering, you know, in terms of planning, you know, what we're planning in case there still is, you know, there's still something to do with this situation. You know, are we going to still be at this notion of physical distancing? You know, how is that going to impact? Or, you know, the biggest thing seems to be the ability to do testing. But I just don't know where we're going to be next fall. And I just am wondering if we're, you know, at some point over the, you know, we might want to start to think about, you know, what are our options and what are some possibilities for the fall? Should we still have limitations on, on what we can do in terms of our traditional classroom?
Well, that's the challenge of all this, right? It's, there's so many unknowns and it's so dynamic. But, but I think that those kind of conversations, I know that those kind of conversations are already well underway. Most immediately for summer school, you know, what is summer school going to look like? How are we, we feel on one hand, we're going to have a greater need than ever for skill building, summer, summer programs. At the same time, we don't know for sure, is that going to be remote? Is that going to be physical, you know, physically on campus? How, how will that work? How, how will we address needs that students who are clearly showing, struggling with the remote learning? You know, how much sense does it make to stay in remote learning for those kids? And how we figure out ways, you know, and again, we don't know where it will be as far as the guidelines by the state for all those things. So, but, so we're looking at contingencies. We had just today in multiple meetings today, one was with our full ed council and we rolled out a document, which I can share with the board, which is a very comprehensive document about what would, what are the, all of the factors we should be thinking about for reopening of school? Whether that be May 15th or whether that be, you know, July 1st or September 1st. And it's a very comprehensive and overwhelming, honestly, list of things to think about. Everything from, you know, transportation on buses to cleaning disinfection systems to, to schedule, school schedules and how students move throughout the building. So, so all those things are kind of like the net has been cast wide, all the possible things to think about. Those will be sort of guided by the guidelines that come to us from New York State, from state ed. And nationally, what are those guidelines? And then so, so on, from a physical scheduling, logistical point of view, we're working in that direction on starting to put all those factors together. There's a whole nother group of people who are working on the remote learning aspect of things from the ground level, the BTCs who are building technical coordinators have scheduled a meeting with the administration to talk about possible paths forward on four different possible contingencies, everything from business as usual to what, what if we get back and have to go back out to what if we're back out for longer? And how would remote learning go? And what, what, how do all the things we're learning right now inform our decisions moving forward? So that's exciting to know that those conversations are had, are being had at a high level. You know, I've talked with, with, with board member, with a board member, John, who's here about like, hey, what, what does this look like for the way that, that we do things going forward? We were just talking and he was asking me, you know, how, what have we learned? And is this something that's going to change the way things happen on a regular basis? Even if everything goes back to normal? And honestly, the BTCs brought that very same point to me. So from all angles, people are, it's kind of exciting. People are just talking about what have we learned? How do we get better? How do we, how do we flex to react to whatever the situations, the circumstances are? So I feel like, and then throw into all that, the budget and, and the situation that could present itself depending on what the economy does. So it really is a dynamic situation. It's going to require all of us to have, you know, to be on our A-game in our leadership roles here, as well as in our technical roles and in our, in our teaching roles and really to be able to navigate this. But I feel like we have a great team and we're working hard to, to take it one day at a time, but with an eye on the future and open up lots of opportunities and lots of options. And I'm confident that we'll keep on doing that and keep on getting better at it.
Patrick, that sounds great. And you're always on top of this stuff, I just got to ask the questions. But the other thing too is I wonder how, how students are progressing? I mean, are you getting feedback from teachers or any of them struggling? Do we want to think about, you know, the time over the summer to extend learning possibilities if students are falling behind in their courses?
Yeah, this is a good time for me to ask Dave to jump in. We want to talk about how hard the feedback and information we're gathering and also how does that affect our plans moving forward in the short term for summer and for remediation and to help catch kids up.
Thanks, Patrick and Peter. Yeah, so as we kind of moved from the initiation stage into transition and then implementation, obviously we were working in two-week increments. And in each phase, obviously, we're looking for feedback or information that would inform the next steps if we in fact would have to be out longer. And as, as we now are fully into implementation and looking at sustaining that in round two of implementation, you know, we really wanted to pull together and try to get data that would best inform kind of how we had done in those previous steps and where we will be moving into the future. So early on, principals began collecting with their assistant principals and other members, you know, evidence of connectivity, which has primarily been accomplished through the teachers providing feedback to the number of students that are participating in, in whether it's live meets or in the various asynchronous methodologies that they are implementing. So on a weekly basis now, we are getting spreadsheets back from the five buildings with a general assessment, you know, some subjectivity obviously, but an assessment of, of fully connected, intermittently connected or limited connection. And based on that information, our social work team, our guidance council team, assistant principals, our resource officer, principals and other interventionists are trying to make various connections to, to students at home to try to reengage in those, those instances where students are more often than not falling into the limited connectivity range. And obviously those interventions are multifaceted as they are during the school year based on the individual situation. So that, that, that's one piece of data and we're hoping to kind of put this all together and present to the group on May 5th, which is our next board meeting. So that's a big piece of information, the connectivity piece. In our special education side, in our response intervention side, we are collecting, you know, logs to try to diagnose and understand the services that our special educators and related service providers and response to intervention teachers are able to do. What, what services are they able to provide? What what services are they able to provide and what services are parents and students able to receive at this time, based on, um, various factors? The department under Sharon and and Darcy have been working very hard as the the language has changed and as the the regulations have have changed to, um, provide the groups with great direction on the reasonableness of service and trying to make sure that kids stay connected, um, to learning and getting the supports that they need, obviously, to to enhance their learning or or allow kids to stay um, on par to the best of their ability with their learning. Again, when we started, there were a couple barriers that we were worried about. One was technology, which we were able to address pretty quickly. The second one was accommodations for students. Our teaching assistants, our special educators and our general education teachers are now, um, working in collaboration to again, provide services on a reasonable level based on the the guidance that we're getting from the state and and federal government. And we're collecting that information on those services. So we have that information as well as far as what's being provided and what we're doing if we're having difficulty providing it through, again, teletherapy, Google meets and and other methods of connecting to teachers, Google classrooms, and again, our teaching assistants providing some one-on-one services as well as our RTI and special ed teachers. We're getting similar reports from our PACE enrichment program, how students are are being able to attend for um, enrichment and for acceleration opportunities. Um, and we're developing two surveys which we intend to put out, um, early next week. One for students in grades three through 12 and one for parents, um, of students in grades K through 12. So we can get information on, um, number of hours that students are self-reporting to be, um, putting in reasons why they assess if they're putting in more than the guidelines that we have suggested or less. If there's technological impacts, if there's other impacts just with their life, other responsibilities and things that are are taking time away from education and, um, just reporting on things that parents and students are finding that are really going well. Things that are really, um, working for them. And then to the contrary, to get, um, a narrative report on things that are barriers or are causing frustration. So we're going to compile all that data and, um, you know, try to make make some sense of it and hopefully we'll be able to report it generally to the group on May 5th.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you both.
Thanks, Dave. I I can tell you, as I've mentioned before, just anecdotally, from what I've seen with, uh, you know, three students in school, one in the elementary school and now two in the high school. What I love about what I've seen is the fact that the teachers and aides and in my youngest cases, occupational therapists have really been very flexible in working with families to to figure out just that, Dave, what's working and what's not working in a in a very fluid manner. So uh, they've done a really nice job with it. And actually, I have to thank Kathy Kendall. She somehow, uh, put together, uh, some kind of a Zoom call or a Google Meet or something with about four or five kids and had them actually playing a game. I I, in fact, I think I heard them playing Simon Says through, uh, some type of a video feed. So again, I I'm amazed at how they're doing this with elementary school students, but, uh, they seem to be doing well. I I'd be lying if I said that all of us aren't ready to, uh, to get out of the house and just start running laps around the neighborhood a little bit. I mean, after all, I've already said twice now, it's 2019. So you can see how well I'm doing with with lockdown and social distancing. Thanks to Dave Rusaki for filling me in that I'm only a year off. But, um, but yeah, it's a, it can be a bit of a challenge for these kids, but, uh, our our staff seems to be doing a good job of trying to make it work for them and keep them engaged through the technologies that they have. So that's greatly appreciated. And thanks for the question, Keith, uh, and the commentary there, Dave. Any other questions from the, uh, from the board? I think we're we're actually still on the, uh, the financial section right now. We haven't quite gotten the policy yet. Although it was a good time to provide some added context, uh, Mr. Collins. But, um, any other questions from the board on the finance committee presentation, any follow up on the budget? Very good. Then, uh, Dr. McGrath, I believe you're up next. If you want to preface this, uh, this conversation about these three policies, how they, how they came to, uh, came to be and, um, give the board members a little bit of context we can think about before the next board meeting. This, of course, is just the first read, so no vote needs to be taken tonight.
Sure. Yeah. So let me just, uh, follow up with one quick thing, uh, maybe folks who are who are tuning in or watching, um, as well as as we are happy with how things are going under the circumstances. We also know that there's a lot of people who are struggling with this and we just want to encourage people, if if you're struggling or you're frustrated, I can't tell you the number of emails I've read where I I'm copied it on things where the principals are able to just help to solve the problem and 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 jump in, whether it's something unrelated to school and need. There's multiple ones that have come to our attention. Shelter type things, food type things, situations like that. Also, there's been a lot of school related situations and the principals are really your key contact person to connect you with someone to help if you don't already have someone to help. So, um, we really would, um, if you're struggling, if your child is struggling with their schoolwork, uh, make sure you contact your principal. Don't, there's no question that's not, that's, that's a silly question or a or a useless question. And then if it's something related to community, uh, Daisy has been a great conduit, Daisy Barney, uh, and her information's on the website as well. And she's been able to really connect people with, uh, community resources and volunteers to help with different needs. So I just didn't want to leave that without saying, as much as we're excited about being able to ride to this challenge and be the best we can under tough circumstances. We know that this is far from ideal for almost any of us and for some people more than others, it's really a struggle. So we, um, we have a lot of safety nets in place and please take advantage of them. Please take advantage of the district because it's, uh, we're here to help, we're here to to support. Okay, so and then moving on to the policy, uh, stuff. So when the pandemic hit, we were still trying to reschedule a, uh, a policy forum. And we had, uh, we have a couple of policies that need to be addressed, um, and based on, you know, NISBA gives us the quarterly updates. And there's a couple of things there that we need to to take care of. And the three of them that we're going to introduce in first read tonight and then have some more discussion, uh, expert discussion next time are related to one related to special services, uh, and Sharon asked to move this forward with some changes, uh, to our, uh, the way, the the way that we do independent evaluations. And there's just some minor language change there. And then, um, a little more complex is the, are the second two, uh, the the, uh, the 5500, which is our student records policy. And then a policy, uh, called information, data privacy, uh, security breach notification, and that is, uh, 8635. So, uh, Chris had some questions about, uh, based on a FOIL, uh, request that he got, uh, about, uh, about policy 5500, which had to do with, uh, which had with, Chris's questions had to do with directory information. What information is the district obligated to release when asked for it? And there is certain information that's protected by FERPA for students' records information, it's certain personal information. But there's other information about the district that's not protected unless someone opts out of it. And that's called directory information. You have discretion as a board about what, uh, how much directory information you want released. And based upon a separate issue which we're dealing with in a FOIL request, the our attorneys raised a question of why do you have a couple of these things in directory information? They're not required and they almost, almost seem like they would just be more information than parents, uh, or like I'd say, for example, student addresses and student phone numbers once they graduate. That would be information that we wouldn't be required to produce if if we, uh, consider that directory information. But you're not required by law to consider it directory information. It's the board's discretion. So as it, as it would happen, um, with the new 2D privacy regulations, this is just a serendipity. We, we have to look at 5500 anyway. Um, we actually have to look at 5500 and 8635 in order to incorporate all the new language for the 2D, uh, student data privacy regulations. Those are the two policies that need to be changed by July 1st. Unrelated to this directory information, I think, but it just happened that that policy needed to be opened up. Chris was asking, based on advice of council, that the district take a look at that policy. And I'm asking based upon advice of Tracy Falvo, our data protection officer, to make sure we have a solid data privacy policy in place by July 1st, just to keep us right in time with the new law that takes effect on July 1st. So those three policies, Sharon's policy, uh, which is the, uh, 4321.4, and then 5500 student records, and then 8635, which is, uh, security breach notification. Those three policies, uh, are on the table now. As as a first read, I I gave them to you, uh, in the in the board, in the board docs, but also if you go over to our board policy review worksheet, you'll see they're highlighted in light blue. Those three up under first read, I gave you the, um, the proposed, uh, document for proposed new. Uh, I I gave you the link to the existing policy and then the link to the proposed new policy. And then we can, uh, have a little more in-depth discussion. What we'll do is we'll mark up those proposed new policies by the next time we meet and you'll see, um, you'll see where the proposed changes are. A lot of this is regulatory and stuff that we have to have in these, there's, there's not a lot of discretionary stuff in the student data stuff. There is that question about, uh, about directory information, but there's not a lot of discretion in the in the side of, uh, in the part of, uh, of the student data privacy. It has to be there. It's by law and, uh, the law isn't that, it's not that we're repeating the law. The law is that you have to have policies that, uh, guide, um, your contracts with your software providers. So, um, wanted to get, remember that we tried to put all these policies out on the table, uh, so that we have at least four weeks before we do a final vote on them. I think that we're required by our own policy to have a two-week period. We like to do, get it out in public, put everything on the website, let everybody know we're discussing it. Two weeks later, at the May 5th board meeting, we'll talk about the changes that we're proposing for these policies. If there's, uh, anyone interested in being part of those conversations, I can loop you in, whether it be with the Sharon or with the, uh, or with Tracy, uh, when we discuss them. And then we can bring them forward with some changes at the May 5th, and then at the following board meeting, we'll change it spread out scheduled. These are the only policies that are recommended by NISBA as, uh, required policies that we need to take care of. So by doing this work, we'll be satisfying our, uh, need to stay on top of, uh, updating policy.
Thanks, Patrick. Sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I just, our, so our feedback in this environment, um, you know, we're not all together talking. Are we to send comments back or denote potential changes virtually here on the document or what?
I think what we should do is anyone who's interested in working on the, doing the groundwork right now of putting the, putting the new policies together, just let me know. And then we'll arrange some time where we can, we'll get everybody on that document, whether it's in real time or whether you're working on it. And then after, and then when we come back to the board meeting with the three policies with the changes and the proposals, then at that point, everybody can jump in and 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 make comments or ask questions. So I was hoping you might actually be, uh, interested in doing that, Dave, with us.
Aye.
Good. Uh, were you looking to jump in, John? For some reason, your picture came up front and center here on my screen. So were you looking to jump in with a question or?
No, I think I just got, I just got some background noise here.
Got it. Okay, very good. I didn't want to cut you off there. So so Patrick, my only question for you then, and thanks for the, uh, the background there. Now that we're getting a little more, uh, confident in this, uh, distance technology here and working remotely, do we want to try and schedule a policy forum, uh, via a Google Meet for the near future? Or the other policies that we've been looking at through NISBA, things that can wait until hopefully we can be back together in a, in a couple of months?
I mean, that could be a way we do it is we just have a policy forum scheduled next week sometime where where any, we can get Tracy and Sharon both there to be able to weigh in um, on their particular policies and people can join us if if they want to. And then, uh, we'll have it ready for the May 5th, that would be fine. And then there, there's a couple other smaller ones that could, we could look at and get out on onto the horizon, but there's nothing else that's pressing right now.
Okay, well, I I certainly don't want to require or request that anyone else join another Google Meet next week. Um, if the working group can work more effectively, uh, either offline or via conference call or however you you prefer to do it, I I I'm okay deferring to the, to the interest of the group. So but I would say, Patrick, and and I'll let anyone else chime in here. If if anyone else would would want to, uh, to be involved and we think it would be more efficient just to get us all together on a, a more informal, but transparent and open forum, I I'd be happy to do that, but, uh, I'll let let the rest of the board weigh in as to whether or not that's something we want to do or, Patrick, we can let you follow the, uh, the protocol you just outlined and and pull Dave in. So, all right, we we, um, well, I I'll tell you, just in case anyone's having trouble getting off mute, we don't have anyone, obviously, that's dying to get on a policy forum, Google Meet. So i- if you are interested in doing something like that, if we want to try and pull the team together that way, just shoot a note to Patrick and I. I'm happy to get that scheduled. Either way, Doc, if you just want to keep me, uh, keep me apprised, I'll certainly, uh, join, uh, Mr. Rusaki and help out, uh, however I can.
Okay, great.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the, uh, on the policy? First read of those policies there. Let me pull my agenda back up. Okay. All right, very good. And we are to, uh, reports and communication. So I'll just go down the list as I have this written, uh, based on when I saw you jump on. So, uh, Peter, anything you want to share for the good of the order?
Uh, no, I don't really have anything. I just, uh, again, want to reiterate how appreciative the board is, you know, of all the work that Patrick, you and Chris and Dave have been doing because, you know, you've really, you know, you've shown tremendous leadership and I was so impressed when I talked to you about everything you had planned out. And I think we're a very fortunate district that we have such tremendous leadership, you know, during a difficult time.
Great. Thanks, Peter. Uh, Jen, I've got you up next if you're still with us and you have anything.
Hi.
Hey, Jen.
How you, how you doing?
Go ahead.
Good. Okay, just give me two seconds. Um, actually.
Do you want to come back to you?
Well, yeah, you can come back to me. That's fine.
Okay. All right. Uh, hey, John, looks like you weren't on mute. Do you want to go next, sir?
Uh, I have nothing to contribute. I'm also.
Nothing. Very good. Uh, Don.
I've got nothing.
All right.
Don, this is Peter. I just want to know, can, next time can I, can I switch rooms with you? Because it looks pretty cool. You got a nice view out there.
It's not real.
Yeah, you can't be in the same room together, Don, so you have to switch locations.
Yes, they have to change.
Yeah.
Well, once we don't have to social distance, Don, we'll just have the meeting at your place.
Yeah, for sure. I want to have, I I do want to have some kind of a board get together here sometime soon.
That would be great. That'd be great. So, Don, do you have anything else for us tonight, sir?
Nope. Thank you.
All right, uh, Dave.
No, I, I'm good. Thank you for having me.
All right, sir. Uh, Lisa, I know the wind was bad by you too. Are you still with us? Your connection hold out?
I am with you and I certainly appreciate, um, the responses that I have got from the administration. I appreciate all the work that the, uh, teachers and, uh, TAs are doing for our students. I've heard so many stories about how appreciative everyone is of their efforts and, um, that's all I have.
Great, thanks. Um, thanks, Lisa. Glad you could get back on. Um, Jen, you you ready for us here?
Yeah. Um, sorry, I lost my notes. Um, yeah, no, I just actually just kind of wanted to to just piggyback off what Lisa said. You know, we really are all in this together and everybody has been phenomenal. I mean, there's a few, you know, bumps along the way because that's normal. We're human beings and and that's just, it's, that's normal. So, um, but everybody has come together for the best interest of the kids and the teachers are working so hard. I mean, so hard. There's emails flying in, you know, Saturday, Sunday, and we kind of forget what day of the week it is, you know, for everyone. But the work.
Here it is.
Yeah, right. The work is still being done and the best interest of the kids is always there. And my heart is just so full with that. It it's not easy. It's not easy. I'm not going to say it's easy for for them, but, you know, and I know we have a lot to think about too, and the teachers and, um, the administration and everything, just in terms of, you know, what's good, what's next you're going to look like, you know, if there's regression or not. And there's just, you know, a lot of stuff. I guess right now there's just too many questions, um, than answers, so I won't, I won't get into it, but I think we're probably all, all thinking a lot, you know, about a lot of that.
No doubt. Thank you. Is that it from you, Jen?
Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you. Then, uh, uh, let's see, Chris or, sorry? Hope you're back.
Stay safe and well, everyone.
Yes, you too, you too. Um, all right, Chris, uh, or Dave, uh, either of you gentlemen have anything else for us?
Um, nothing to report. We just want to say thank you to the board for the kind words about us. And I also want to pass on those kind words. As you mentioned, we've got a great team here at Burn Hills, Boston Lake. That starts with you guys at the Board of Education, but our faculty, staff, our team members. It it shows what a great culture we have here. And as Jen said, how we're all in this together. It's amazing watching everybody come together in in difficult circumstances in service to our students. It's wonderful to watch. It's wonderful to be a part of the team here at Burn Hills. Well, thank you for that.
Thanks, Chris. You know, it's funny you talk about the, uh, the the team and the culture. One other nice, really nice thing that I've been seeing, and it's not necessarily related to the school district, although some of you may have friends or relatives involved, but at least around here, we've, uh, we've heard at least three, four times, uh, just, uh, the whaling of of sirens and trucks and, uh, you know, the 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 fire engines coming through the neighborhood. And the first couple of times, we had no idea what was happening. We thought half the block was on fire. Um, and and it's our. So, it's just another indicator of just how nice it is to see people coming together during this time. But about the third time we figured it out, we all ran out to the fortune wave to everybody, but it's appreciated, it's a really nice touch from the gang over at the Fire Department, want to thank them for that, too. All right, Dave, if you're still with us, anything else from you, sir?
Just really quickly, always yielding to the senior assistant superintendent in the room, he was extremely articulate, but I do want to say thank you as well for the support of the board. There's too many really great things right now to call anything individual out at the worry of leaving anybody out, but we're being invited as district office into admin meetings, faculty meetings, department meetings, into Google meets, into PD sessions. You wouldn't believe just the informal leadership that's happening across all areas of the district, admin, faculty, staff. Thank you to our students and our parents. There's just, I'm almost excited for the next board meeting, where we try to encapsulate some of the great things that are happening. I really do think you'll be even more impressed, and it is truly, truly a team effort. So, lots of challenges, no doubt, totally different modality, no doubt, but amazing things happening, so thank you all.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you, and thank you both for all you've been doing during this difficult time. Dr. McGrath, anything else from you?
We don't want to forget about Hannah, too, I think Hannah's still out there.
Oh, my goodness, Hannah's still on the call, too. Let's go to Hannah first, then, if you're still there, my apologies.
That's okay, I'm here. I'm all set, just thank you, everybody, for all that you do, and keep working hard and stay safe.
You too, and thanks so much.
Hey, Hannah, just an FYI, Hannah Shell is driving and doing a great job.
Thanks, Mr. Rusaki.
Congratulations.
Take one.
Well, you know, interestingly, since we, and thank you very much for, Doc reminded me that Hannah was on, because really, I think one of the other people we do need to thank publicly, and I'm sure Hannah would agree, would be Tim Brunson, the high school principal, of course, and I appreciate your comments, Dave. I mean, I always hesitate to point out someone that I've seen at the high school or elementary school that's doing something really special, because I don't want to leave anyone out either, or only have, you know, the Ziegler kids' teachers called out for the wonderful job they're doing, but I do think it's important that we recognize some of these positive, I don't want to say developments, but the positive efforts that some of these people are putting in, and I can tell you that just from the correspondence we've received, I know Hannah's already given a thumbs up, so I appreciate that. We've seen how much work and effort Tim Brunson is putting into making sure that, as challenging an end to their senior year as this is going to be for Hannah, my son, and all your friends and classmates, Tim is really working hard to make sure that every special senior date, whether it's a graduation or whether it's the senior prom, that those events still come together, even if it's got to be in the fall semester, and that's really appreciated. There's clearly, I know Lisa Morse has pointed this out as well, but I want to make sure it's called out for the public record, that we appreciate the time and effort he's putting in to make sure that these events still happen. They're certainly important for the seniors, but I'll tell you, they're important for the family members as well, to have that chance to recognize our children and our friends like Hannah, so, and recognize all their accomplishments. So, thank you very much for that, Tim. All right, Doc, thanks so much for reminding me that Hannah was here and giving me that, those few minutes, let me turn it back over to you.
No, that, I was, that's exactly what I was going to say, and thinking about Hannah, I just wanted to thank Tim, so we're on the same page. You know, there's a lot that I know that, you know, is uncertain for the seniors, and we appreciate their patience, I know they understand that in some ways, this, we're all in this, we're trying to figure it out, but we have a commitment to do the absolute best we can to make the end of the year special and memorable, and it'll certainly be memorable, that's for sure, no matter what. It'll be something that you always remember, that this was the senior, this was the senior class that this, that this all took place during, so that'll be one marker, but, so, no, I just, I appreciate his leadership, and I just, again, echo what Dave and Chris both said to you guys, is we appreciate your support, we're working hard, we have an awesome team here, and I'm confident that we'll just continue to take in the information, flex, move, and try to figure out what the best course forward is in the short term and in the long term. So, thanks, everybody, very much. And I think we're all getting good at the technology, I mean, it's a lot, I just realized that I have to unmute my mic on this laptop in order to let the audio for the Pleasure of Allegiance go through, so I'll learn one more little thing at each of these things. I'm trying to juggle a couple of computers here at once.
No, no doubt, no doubt. I know the same, I was getting texts from board members, again, that they're having trouble jumping on, or, you know, they couldn't hear, so I understand, it is a little bit challenging when you're not just face-to-face. In fact, the toughest thing for me is trying to keep the agenda up, so I don't have to print it, I've got the agenda pulled up electronically on a phone or a separate laptop while I'm on the Google Meet here on the iPad, where the picture's better, so it's a little bit of a challenge, I'm not the most technologically sufficient, so, yeah, we're doing okay with what we've got, though, so I appreciate it. All right, so anything else from our board members for the good of the order?
Yes, one other, can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
My excellent administrative assistant is on the line right now, she's an amazing help to keeping things running smoothly behind the scenes, and today is Administrative Assistance Day, and I know that Dave and I have something both for our two assistants here, but we didn't see them today, and they didn't see us today, I should say, and, so, anyway, Dottie, thank you very much for everything that you do, happy Administrative Assistance Day. We miss you, look forward to getting back to normal.
Thank you.
Outstanding, and thank you from all of us on the board as well, Dottie, it was good to see, what was it, end of, I don't even know what day it was now, I don't know what day today is, so I think it's, sorry, end of last week it was. So, good to see you again, we appreciate all you do for the board as well in keeping us on point, so, thank you, we look forward to seeing you, seeing us all together again soon, back in the boardroom. All right, anything else from the board? And if not, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So would.
I figured it would be Mr. Blower, who's off pretty quick for that. All right, we got John and Dave all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Sure no one's opposed, so thanks so much for joining, everybody, stay safe, stay healthy, we'll see you next time, and thanks for all your support and all you've been doing, keep it up.
Right at 6 o'clock, Patrick, nice job.
Not bad, not bad. Thanks, everybody, have a good night.